Ashley Jones.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Bill Low.
Here.
Kim York. Kim, you're muted.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Present. Thank you. All right, on to our mission statement, preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yes.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our consent items, is there a motion to approve the consent items as presented?
So I moved to approve the motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions about consent? Okay, roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yes.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to the full closure update, Dr. Montes.
Well, good evening, everybody. I want to just kind of give you a little bit of an update of where we're at right now. And last Friday was kind of the end of our academic calendar. So I don't think any of us could have imagined back on March 16th when we announced our first closure announcement that we would see that through to the end of the year. But I really want to thank our staff and our parents and students both, all, for their flexibility and their work to kind of keep things going throughout the course of the semester. Each of the schools had a checkout process last week, you know, kind of following some social distancing guidelines as they did that. And they had really good turnout collectively across the district at that. And now we're just catching up with the few families that we didn't meet with last week to close out the school year. We've been spending a lot of time working on kind of our transition back to school plan and what that might look like. So, starting in June, we're going to have a few activities around campuses involving students. We're going to have a limited Panther Pride camp starting June 8th. We're going to be open for some activity conditioning related activities as of June 15th, which will be outdoor with social distancing and all those things that we can kind of manage in a situation like that. We're still optimistic to have summer school in person on July 6th for the families that want to come. Of course, we'll have to follow any of the guidelines that are in place between now and then. But we're optimistic that, given the smaller numbers, that we can spread them out enough to have a decent summer school in July. And of course, you're going to hear more about that here in just a little bit from Dr. Volker. Still shooting for July 17th for graduation, and we've got some contingency plans in place there if we need them at that point in time. So as we kind of look forward to next year, we're going to have to keep a lot of options available to us. And that's really what we're working on now, is trying to figure out what those options might look like. If for any reason, we can't do the full traditional school setting like we normally do. So, we're going to have to be flexible and be ready for about anything and then hope for the best that we can continue on with a more traditional setting, at least that's our goal. Tomorrow, we are sending out a parent survey that will get some feedback from our parents, not only on some of our strategic plan priorities, but also kind of some feedback about distance learning, what worked and what didn't work well for their families. And then what their thoughts might be about returning to school in the fall, what those concerns or where they think they are as a family in terms of that situation. So I want to get a feel for that so as we continue our planning this summer, we know what's going on. And of course, Dr. Slagel's been heavily involved in all that planning as he has been ready to transition here in the district. So, the team is really working hard to try to get plans available. And I think in your July retreat, we'll be able to have a lot more information to share with you about what those different scenarios look like. Overall, I think we've made the best of a very difficult situation, thanks to the hard work of everybody involved. It certainly was a learning experience for us as an organization. And I think it taught us a lot about what we might be able to do in the future in terms of a variety of instructional opportunities for our kids and students in the future. So, that's kind of the update with that. I know everybody that works here at Raypek is very much looking forward to having kids back on campus. I mean, that's really the reason we're all here, is to support those students. While we can make it work remotely, it's just not the same. So, I'm optimistic that that opportunity is going to come sooner rather than later. Let's just hope we get more good news over time in terms of that ability to do that. So, that kind of gives, concludes my update.
Thank you. All right, moving on to action items, summer school application, Dr. Volker.
Well, good evening, everyone. We are really at our formal part of our summer school process with our application to the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So when you look at the application document, it is really truly just an outline of the summer program. It doesn't have the individual components. It doesn't break it down, and that's not really what required of this document. It does list the locations, it lists the open and close date. You'll notice that 6-3-2020, it'll list Creekmore Elementary, 6-3-2020. Well, technically, that will still be virtual, so that is a virtual start. And in looking, I actually have enrollment numbers, which normally on our application time, we don't have those as well. But we're a little follow along. We have over 955 students that have signed up for online summer school in June from our first through 12th, incoming 12th grade students. So that's a, that's a good number, I'm excited about that. Our largest group that has signed up so far are freshman class and 158 incoming freshmen that have signed up for courses for summer school. So, that's just a little bit of information that we wouldn't normally have as I'm talking to you about the application process. Remember, they did delay us and give us another month to complete this application. Looking at the document as well, lists the close date, 7-31-2020. We will have, hopefully, in-person students going up to the 30th and virtual students finishing on July 31st. Well, that is our summer program across. These are all, of course, estimates when you submit this to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So those enrollment numbers are truly that, they are just estimates. I'd be happy to answer any questions about our application before we go for approval.
Is it too late for someone to submit that they want to do summer school?
That's a great question. We, for the June virtual, yes, that is closed for June. We do have a July session that can be virtual and in-person. We're actually going to do another kind of round of enrollment as we get a little closer to our July in-person. So, parents, families, students can go on and sign up for July. We thought if we gave a little more time and a little bit closer to that session, we'd even be able to provide them a little more information about our structure, safety procedures, things that we're doing to make sure that our students are safe while at summer school, and then parents can take a look at that and decide if they would like to sign up for in-person July. So we're looking at that week, I think, oh yeah, June 8th through the 12th, opening that up again so folks can go on there and sign up for July summer school.
Thank you. Did somebody have a comment? Okay, is there a motion to approve the summer school application as presented?
I move to approve the summer school application as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yes.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes. All right, moving on to our digital, or excuse me, our alternative methods of instruction with Dr. Montes.
Yeah, just to give you a little bit of background before Dr. Volker walks you through what's in the application. When you see something like this, you might immediately think this is all COVID-related and what we've just gone through. But actually, it precedes that issue coming into our system, if you will, in that a year ago, the legislature approved this statute that would allow school districts to make up weather days virtually. And so, they gave the Department of Education a year to put together the guidelines and for districts to apply for approval, and that's where we're at in this process. So, we learned a lot from what we've been through in the last couple of months, and that kind of informed what this process was like. But what this does is give us the structure in place to allow us, if approved by DESI, to make up weather, inclement weather days next fall, next winter, if you will, up to 36 hours, or in our case, five calendar days that we could make up virtually during the next school year. Now, realistically, the structure we put in place to do that will serve us well if for any other reason we can't have school. But beyond the five days that are identified in statute, it would take some special waiver or compensation like we're under now with an emergency order for us to be able to use it for other purposes, if you will. So this is really about just setting us up for the weather days that may come our way in the future. But the system, again, is kind of dual purpose, and it can help us like go through the situation we've just been through the last couple of months. So that's kind of the background of that. We would submit this prior to the June 15th deadline. And then we would wait for DESI to respond back with hopefully approval or feedback for reconsideration. And then, in theory, we would inform families about it during the fall in preparation of the new school year. So with that, Dr. Volker, you want to give them a little more detail?
Absolutely. When you look at our application, it really has four components. There is the instructional component, the communication component, the access component, and then a question related to special education, special education component. Looking at it, it's broken down. This is a template that's provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and you have to go through and answer the questions in affirmative or mark the areas that you are going to include in your plan. So I'm not going to go through every question, but in essence, in the instructional component, we had to list the things that we were going to do to strengthen and reinforce quality instruction virtually when we have an AMI day, the purpose and expectations and things that we're trying to do. That carries right over to the communication components. How are we going to let our families know that this is a process that's available to us as a district and we will use as a district? And we've listed many things, so they, for example, websites, emails. I think probably the most important thing is to talk to families directly about these, the back-to-school information nights, those are always a great tool to use. And then it talks even about, are you going to do this often? Are you going to communicate this throughout the year? And we mark absolutely we will early in the school year. And as we start to communicate, I know Dr. Pettingill communicates often regarding inclement weather plans as we get a little bit farther, you know, October, November. Well, that's also a perfect time to discuss the AMI plan again. So I think that would be something important to do. In the access component, when you look at the access component, and it is question 6B, I think that's an important component. And we listed the district does plan to provide internet access or connection solutions and a web-enabled device to all families without internet on an as-needed basis. So, to fully implement the plan, we need to make sure that all of our students and families have access. We've already done some things as a part of the process that we're using right now, or have used, now that school's over, have used through virtual instruction. And, but we're going to continue to work on those and provide that support for our families so they can access it. I think that's really important. And then the last is special education. You have to assure that you'll follow the special education processes as set forth by DESI. I was actually talking with our special education compliance department today about our AMI plan. And they're working diligently in the department as well to provide guidance so school districts know exactly how to implement that appropriately, and we will. So that is the components, those are the components of the AMI plan. I'd be happy to talk about it with any level of specificity or answer any questions.
Was this presented to the teachers and what did they think about it?
The AMI application was not presented to the teachers. It is, it comes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So it's, how would you, if you use, if you use snow days or use virtual learning instead of snow days, how would you accomplish that? Basically, Paul, we took the processes and procedures that our teachers have developed and worked on throughout our virtual learning process and put them in this structure. And then talked about how we would communicate them. So, our teachers through our professional development committee have talked about snow days and virtual options. We've talked a lot about it virtually for teachers. This is virtually instruction for students, but I think they will absolutely be ready to do this. It's, about the, the alternative is putting those days at the end of the year often. And I, I think if you ask any teacher, the instructional difficulties of adding days in late May and sometimes June is significant.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, ask, so, I know we'll probably maybe get more information when we put out a survey towards the end of the year of the parents. But as far as connectivity for kids, do we know how that has gone for them?
Yes, that's a great question. I, I've been very proud of our teachers and our principals and all of, all of us really at getting the amount of information from our families. So, we have lists from every single building of our students who weren't able to access this information in a virtual way. And we've been updating that as that condition has changed throughout the year. So we have a very high level of information and detail. We have great connectivity in this district, but there's still, we want to make that connectivity 100%. So we have that list, we have that information. We'll probably ask as well at registration just to get a little bit more information. But I feel pretty confident we have a very good and high-level information now.
Just to add on to that, we, through our process, were able to determine that it's fewer than 3% of our students had limited access that couldn't really access materials electronically. So we are remarkably blessed in that regard as a community and a school district. There are more rural areas of the state that it's just not a very good option regardless of resources at home. They just don't have the connectivity. And so, we've got very good coverage here, so that makes our plan doable. In fact, we probably wouldn't have presented the plan the way we have unless we'd gone through these last couple of months and figured out exactly what our, what our landscape looks like. So we're pretty fortunate overall to where it's doable to reach everybody.
I was going to say, I'm very thankful for the investment that our district has put into technology over the last several years because we wouldn't be in the position we are now positively had we not done that investment.
That is very true.
All right, is there a motion to approve the alternative methods of instruction plan action as presented?
Yes, I, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Kim York.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to digital document and copying equipment, Mr. Gooding.
Good evening. Bids were advertised and sealed for our copiers on April 30th for 63 multi-funks and copiers across the district. The district received nine proposals and conducted an in-depth analysis through site visits, reference checks, software, hardware evaluations, and numerous, numerous meetings and discussions with vendors. The technology department requested demo units and received copiers from All Copy and Toshiba to ensure the proposed products would work within the Raymore-Peculiar School District computing and network architecture. Key components of the evaluation included feedback from faculty and staff, ease of management, and the financial impact on the district. Toshiba, Toshiba copiers would prefer devices faculty and staff and the district will save approximately $147,500 over 48 months compared to the current, the current contract that we're under with All Copy. So tonight, the district administration recommends awarding the four-year contracts to Toshiba for digital document imaging equipment services. The administration will negotiate final configurations and details of the contract with a target installation date of July 1, 2020, having them ready for, for teachers and students when they return to school in August. Be happy to answer any questions about the copiers.
Toshiba came in at half the cost of everybody else?
Yeah, I think they really wanted to work with us. They, they were, they were well under everybody else. So when I said, well, I had many, many conversations with them, we have had many, many conversations to make sure they're covering everything that, that was in the RFP that we, that we wrote. But yes, they came in at a great price for the district.
Have you talked to anybody else who's used these copiers?
Yes, yes, we have. There's three other districts that they use for references in the Kansas City area that we talked with, who have been happy with the service and the performance of the units.
I appreciate that you had them bring them in so that people could work with them and make sure that they were going to truly work for us.
Yeah.
Especially with that big of a difference.
Yes, yes.
We expect the learning curve is going to be moving to Toshiba, I mean, software.
Yeah, so for our, for our faculty, I don't think that the learning curve's going to be, going to be too great because the interface is, is the same. My largest concern is just that we've been with one, one vendor for several years now, and so my, my staff is really comfortable with that software that we've been using. And so that will be a change, but we wrote into the RFP PD for not only the teachers in the district that the company has to provide PD for them, but they also have to provide PD for my staff. So that's all kind of baked into that price. So we'll have a lot of opportunities to have hands-on with a lot of the engineers at Toshiba. Luckily, they're a local company, so they have a branch out in Lee Summit that we've already spent a lot of time at, talking with their staff and getting comfortable. And I took, took members of my staff out there with me as well to, and introduced them to the people out there and made sure there was a comfort level when they spoke with those people as well, just to make sure that that, that training goes well and we're able to, to manage the, the copiers here. A big piece of leasing these, leasing these devices, though, is that Toshiba is responsible for the majority of the everyday operations of the equipment. So they're, they're going to be doing the majority of the service calls. But I do want my people to be, to be very familiar with the software so that they're able to fix everyday issues and we get things back online for teachers as quick as possible.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bid for digital document imaging and copying equipment services from Toshiba Business Solutions as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman.
Yeah.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low. Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Kim York.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Chromebooks, Mr. Gooding.
All right, so we conducted a second RFP for pricing on 1,650 Chromebooks to be used by our fourth-grade classrooms and as take-home devices for our sixth and ninth-grade students. These are just replacement devices that we, that we bring in every year. So the Dell Chromebooks were selected for a number of reasons, the biggest of which was how much our kids enjoyed them last year. We gave them to our sixth and ninth graders last year, and they were great devices for them, they worked well in the classroom. And the kids really enjoyed the fact that they could fold over and they, they had a touchscreen on them and allowed them to do some different things in classrooms that they couldn't do with some of the more traditional Chromebooks. So the big piece of this is all our devices. One of the great things our district does is we provide that accidental device protection warranty for our families. So our middle school students get a three-year, and our elementary and high school families get a four-year warranty. And that covers pretty much anything that would happen to the device that is unintentional. So even if you spill a Coke on it, or if you accidentally drop it, it's covered for one time a year of a repair for three years for our middle schoolers and four years, like I said, for our high school and elementary students. So we've worked extensively with Dell in the computer space for several years, and we're always pleased with their service and the durability of their devices for our district. So tonight, we're recommending the purchase of the 1,650 Chromebook computers from Dell Computer for $583,000.
All right, questions?
I was glad to see, you know, the diversity of the bids and that Dell was such a, you know, did come in so low, it was such a good bid, and with our good experience with them. So, seems like a good package altogether.
I would agree, yes.
Well, and I appreciate we don't have to go to our families to ask them to provide that insurance coverage. I know that there are some districts out there that require the parents to do that insurance. So I'm glad.
That would be most, most districts, so yes, we're, we're very, very blessed that you guys approved that and that, and that that goes through. It's been very nice for our students.
Now, is this just replacing ones that we already currently have that are just aged out?
Yeah, so every, every three years, we, the eighth graders take them from, or six, six to the eighth grade, and then, then we recycle those, and then freshmen all the way up to seniors, and then we recycle those. And then elementary, we replace a class every, every year, so.
All right, is there a motion to approve the bid for 1,650 Chromebook computers from Dell Computer in the amount of $583,000, which includes three-year and four-year accidental device protection warranty?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or comments? Roll call.
Paul Kaufman.
Yeah.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Kim York.
Yes.
All right, moving on to, thank you, Mr. Gooding. Moving on to interactive panel play bid. Oh, I'm sorry, you're still here with us.
It's okay, that's all right. So, we conducted an RFP for pricing for 54 interactive flat panel displays, which these are like touchscreen televisions is what, is what we're talking about here, to be used by students and staff at Stonegate and Timber Creek. And the displays are going to replace aging projectors. And when I say aging, some of them are, some of the displays or the, the smartboards that we have in place right now are over 10 years old. Most of them are over 10 years old at this point. And, and we need, it is a much-needed need in the classroom just to start cycling out these displays. So through the 1920 school year, the Technology and Academic Services Department partnered in the valuation and trial of several interactive flat panel displays. And the district worked with five vendors to supply proof of concept, concept units that would go through an evaluation by teachers, administrators, and technical staff. The evaluation included hands-on trials in PD and classroom situations as well as technical evaluations such as ease of management and programming. Finally, after over four months of testing, training, and gathering feedback, we ran each display through a rigorous scoring, scoring rubric to select a display we felt best suited the needs of our classrooms. ClearTouch displays were a unanimous choice by our teachers, administrators, and technical staff. And I do just want to address really briefly, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it, but you're going to see there's a major outlier in that, in that bid from a separate vendor. And we did a lot of, tried to do a lot of communicating with that vendor, that's a vendor from California. And just starting the conversation with them of trying to figure out who is going to do your install here in Kansas City. And I'm still waiting for them to come back with me on the information on because they came in really cheap on how much they were going to install those in our classrooms. And I'm still waiting for them to come back with a vendor that they're going to use to install those as well as giving me just a couple of buildings or a couple of districts in Missouri who are already using their products. So that, that's a product I had never heard of, but I do know that's an outlier. It'll definitely get, get people's attention when, when they see that. But we do feel really good about the process we went through with the five, the five, the five displays that are most used in schools across the, across the nation right now. So tonight, we're recommending the purchase of 54 ClearTouch interactive flat panel displays with installation, professional development, and a five-year onsite warranty from KCAV for $199,832.40. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion to approve the bid for 54 ClearTouch interactive flat screen displays professional development and five-year onsite warranty from KCAV in the amount of $199,832.40?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions?
I would just like to thank Mr. Gooding for the thorough analysis on this bid. Appreciate all your work on that, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, hearing no more, roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Try it again.
Okay, yeah, sometimes you kind of break up on me, so. Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King. Bill Low.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Kim York.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gooding, MacBook Air and iPad Pro bid.
Last one, last one. So, also in April, we, we requested quotes from Apple for... for, um, some products to be used by our teachers during the twenty-twenty-one school year. Prices requested for iPad Pro and MacBook Air laptop computers. The district selected vendors Apple, and as done in the past, they're a sole source provider. Uh, we cannot buy merchandise from anybody else other than Apple in the education space. They have a, they have kind of a stranglehold on that market for their devices. So you have to go through Apple. So as we continue to incorporate technology into classrooms across the district, it's important to give teachers and students the tools they need for effective integration. With that in mind, teachers were given the option this year, which is a little bit different. Typically, we've just given them an i, a MacBook Air, but this year we gave them a choice, what they felt would be best in the classroom for them, either, either a MacBook Air or an iPad Pro, uh, for their, for their classroom instruction. So over the last five years, teachers, technology staff, and the academic services department continue to research the best devices to support and interact with student learning. All parties believe that MacBook Air and the iPad Pro are the most appropriate device for teachers within a one-to-one environment and recommend the, the continued implementation across the district. And I will say that this, along obviously with the Chromebooks that, uh, that were approved by the board as we got those out to students, but this was also a lifesaver for our stu, for our teachers in, in our, uh, virtual learning process that we went through, that they all had a device. And actually, last year was the, the moment when we actually got to full saturation for us, for our teaching staff. So that actually worked out well for us. But for them all, to all have a device at home that could connect to the internet and allow them to get that connection from, with their students was, was a great advantage that our district also had over some other districts. So tonight, we're recommending the purchase of thirty-two iPad Pros and eighty-five MacBook Air computers with three years of Apple Care from the Apple Computer Company for a hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that also.
I don't have a question about this, but I do want to know how many RFPs you, uh, how many bids you opened up on bid day for all your RFPs?
Too many. Too many, too many, too many. There's lots of envelopes. So I think, uh, Pam Steele and I went through about a gallon of hand sanitizer that day because of the mail and everything else. So that was a lot of fun for us. I appreciate Pam hanging with me because I think it took us like almost three hours to get through that process.
Wow.
Well, thank you. All right. So do we have a motion to approve the purchase of thirty-two iPad Pro and eighty-five MacBook Air computers with three-year Apple Care from Apple Computer Company in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none. Uh, roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman?
Yeah.
Aaron Hallett?
Yes.
Ashley Jones?
Yes.
Billy King?
Yes.
Bill Lowe?
Yes.
Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Kim York?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Gooding.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to district flooring replacement. Dr. Petten Gill?
Hi, I'd like to point out that, uh, Pam Steele gets to, um, document all of our bids as well. So she can keep her busy on that side. Um, this year, we identified four classrooms at Bridle Ridge in need of, uh, complete carpet replacement. Uh, furthermore, Peculiar Elementary is getting a new main entrance, the storefront, as you enter the building. That was needed this summer. Um, and we'll add walk-off carpet there as well. Um, that's in lieu of rubs at the entrances. Uh, that mitigates slips and helps protect our floors in the building. We'll also add walk-off carpet to the entrances at Bridle Ridge Elementary and at the district office. Uh, four vendors submitted proposals for this work. Uh, bids were calculated, and BR Carpet was the low bidder for the work.
When will this, when will this be done?
Um, this summer, soon.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the bid for carpet replacement in four classrooms at Bridle Ridge and installation of walk-off carpet at the entrances of Bridle Ridge, Peculiar, and Administrative Services Center from BR Carpet in the amount of twenty-eight thou, twenty-eight thousand four thirty-two oh nine with a five percent contingency for any unforeseen construction issues?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions? All right, roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman?
Yes.
Aaron Hallett?
Yes.
Ashley Jones?
Yes.
Billy King?
Yes.
Bill Lowe?
Yes.
Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Kim York?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Petten Gill, paper towels and dispenser bid?
I get all of the exciting things to talk about. Um, but our paper towel dispensers district-wide are approximately seven years old, and they're failing. And by failing, I mean they're jammed. Um, it's due to the knives wearing out, um, as it has to cut the paper. Uh, we did quite a bit of research, and by we, I mostly mean Scott Dodson did a lot of research, um, and solicited bids for cases of paper towels. And the bid would include replacement of all one thousand two hundred and sixty-two, uh, paper towel dispensers that we have in our school district. Uh, the new dispensers will be touchless. And when I say touchless, I don't mean automated, um, but you don't actually have, there's not jamming, and then they're individually cut paper towels. So we did have those tested at two of our schools prior to bidding. Um, a lot of this started with a presentation from fifth-grade students at Creekmore through a Project Lead the Way class, um, that were talking about it, and we listened to their presentation, and that got our, so we chose them to do as a pilot site. Pure Zone, uh, submitted a bid of forty-four dollars per case of paper towels, and that bid's locked in for three years, and then the dispensers are built into that cost. Um, and they have to install them all. So based on expected use, uh, in the next year, which is around a thousand pieces of paper towels that we go through in a year, um, we up that just, uh, with the current status, um, increased hygiene, uh, it is being recommended that the bid from Pure Zone of forty-four thousand, uh, for paper towels and replacement of all dispensers be accepted.
Questions?
Many, many times, the paper towels from the company, they'll supply the dispensers. Did you try to negotiate that in?
Yeah, we, we had the bids include the dispensers and installation of the dispensers.
But you couldn't get them for free because we're, because we're buying the paper towels from this company?
Right. Um, that, the price we got is, 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 is good. Um, we did, we said the paper, that the dispensers had to be thrown in with the price, so they're gonna build that into their price.
I love that this idea came from students. Okay, is there a motion to accept the bid for paper, paper towels and dispensers from Pure Zone in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars?
So moved. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Paul Kaufman?
Yes.
Aaron Hallett?
Yes.
Ashley Jones?
Yes.
Billy King?
Yes.
Bill Lowe?
Yes.
Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Kim York?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Petten Gill. Moving on to Panther Pride tuition.
Well, our Panther Pride program, which is, which is our before and after-school care, is ideally designed to be a break-even program. Um, but however, projections of the current school year showed, um, some expected shortcomings even before the advent of the coronavirus. An approximate increase of five percent tuition fees is being recommended to the board for consideration. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion to approve the Panther Pride tuition for the twenty-twenty-twenty-one as presented?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second? All right, any further discussion, comments?
Oh, I just had a quick question. Um, how do, how do our rates compare, um, with the rest of the community providers?
That is a great question, Kim. Um, part of Luke's research that he sits down with myself and, and Cindy Bias with, um, when we're talking about this is, is he does compare us to the other, um, providers in town. We don't want to undercut our, um, other partners in the communities. Um, so we're very comparable. Um, we're, we're right at the average.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman?
Yes.
Aaron Hallett?
Yes.
Ashley Jones?
Yes.
Billy King?
Yes.
Bill Lowe?
Yes.
Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Kim York?
Yes.
Okay, moving along to the bread and bun products bid. Dr. Petten Gill?
Yeah, Sarah Telberg's favorite part of her entire job of the year is to present to the board. So I know she's very upset she didn't get to do this. Um, but as a school district serving well over six thousand students, we do go through a lot of bread. Uh, two companies responded to our request for bids. Roma Bakery provides fresh bread versus the frozen, and, um, they also had the lowest bid. So it is being recommended the bid from Roma be approved.
Did, did you have the kids test this, too?
Well, we were using Roma before, so I, I'm, it'll be very similar products, but no, I, uh, so. Not a specific pilot, no.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the bid for bread products for the twenty-twenty twenty-one school year from Roma Bakery?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman?
Yeah.
Aaron Hallett?
Yes.
Ashley Jones?
Yes.
Billy King?
Yes.
Bill Lowe?
Yes.
Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Kim York?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Petten Gill, last one, beverage bid?
Very good.
And we're all hungry now.
Beyond milk, uh, the district also purchases numerous beverages to be made available, um, through our child nutrition department. Uh, we had bids, uh, bids were submitted from US Foods, PepsiCo, and Curie Dr. Pepper. Um, US Foods submitted bids for all of our requested items and are, and overall the best fit for the district, uh, to partner with to provide our beverages. So that's who we are recommending tonight.
Is that who our current provider is?
It is.
And we've been happy with them?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the bid for the beverages for twenty-twenty twenty-one school year from US Foods Incorporated as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman?
Yes.
Aaron Hallett?
Yes.
Ashley Jones?
Yes.
Billy King?
Yes.
Bill Lowe?
Yes.
Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Kim York?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. I'm not sure if anyone had any since we haven't been in the buildings.
Wellness Committee, Wellness Committee would like to defer to the CDC or the WHO for, uh, wellness of the district.
Thank you. All right, moving on to superintendent's report.
All right. Uh, I want to share with you that yesterday, we had the opportunity to prevent, uh, present our Real World Learning, uh, Plan Design to the Kaufman Foundation Group, along with other school districts around the metro and industry partners that were watching in. We had about forty-five people watching our presentation. Uh, I want to thank Dr. Volker, Dr. Barr, uh, Jake Wingo, our Community Partnership Coordinator, and Stephen Miller, the high school, as part of our, kind of our lead team. Uh, we, you know, kind of enjoyed this process, obviously, over the course of the year. And I want to thank the board members that served on the Innovation Committee that helped put this all together and helped with all the feedback collection and development through the course of the year. We, we kind of had to cut some of that planning work short, uh, in the spring, um, you know, and, and kind of finish it off, but, uh, as a team. But we, we were able to do that, and I think it was very well-received. Pretty proud of the document that was prepared that we've shared with you as a board, and we're gonna be sharing more with the, the, the community as we move forward. Uh, you know, for next year, priorities are, uh, enhancing those senior drive projects to where they have a client project associated with them. That'll, that'll create a market value asset for a large number of our seniors before they leave us. And of course, we're still building out the machining program. We've got the, the, the staff member hired to support the program. We've got the space identified. Uh, the MCC has announced the National Science Foundation grant that's gonna help fund the connectivity piece of that with the video conferencing with the instructor there at MCC. So a lot of those pieces are following together. What we're waiting on now is our, our DESI enhancement grant to be approved, which we would expect to hear in the next two or three weeks so that we can get the equipment ordered. So that's all pretty exciting. Uh, I want to congratulate Andrea Cox as our, uh, PTA selection for Volunteer of the Year. They do a great job recognizing all the volunteers, and of course, they have tremendous nominees every year. And normally, we'd be recognizing or here at this board meeting, uh, if we had everybody in person. But I wanted to send out a congratulations to her and all the nominees, and thank the PTA for, for recognizing our, our folks who really help us, uh, throughout the year. Also want to thank Michelle Stidham for putting together the slideshow about the retirees across the district. There are lots of years of service that, you know, we normally get to celebrate in person. We couldn't do this year, but I personally want to thank each and every one of them for their time with the district and their support of our, our students and each other over the years. I want to also congratulate our Board of Education. You, we were notified in the last